He's also a member of our indoor track team. So he's also planning on participating and I believe golf this spring. I, I, I think that that's something that he's planning on participating in. You know, Gordon is a guy who, you know, I had a chance to observe at the end of the National Honor Society meeting. And I think he was the last student there and he was truly a help to Mrs. Bartholomew, picking stuff up and working with her on making sure that, you know, he trusted his teacher enough. And he supported his teacher enough to kind of work with her and embody that National Honor Society spirit. By volunteering right then and there. So he's definitely a testament to our student body. A, a fine representative of our student body and Gordon, you're a man after my own heart. So I hear you want to move out to Montana and become a bison rancher. So I'm looking forward to hearing your presentation. Thank you for joining us tonight. Oh, William, it looks like he's having some connectivity issues.
My, my video went out. Um, can you guys hear me?
Barely.
One second, I'm going to try to prioritize this whole. I haven't had Zoom in a very long time, which I'm, I'm grateful for, but at the same time, it leaves me a little rusty. So I'm going to go try to get a
Gordon, we can hear you just fine now.
Hopefully you guys can hear, hear me back. Okay, sweet. All right. Um, is the, is the work, is that important or is not?
So you go right ahead and speak. Don't, don't worry about the camera right now.
Alrighty. So howdy everyone. My name is Gordon and like, like, like it was previously mentioned, I'm a member of the Ju- I was a member of the Junior Animal Science Program last year. And this year I'm participating in the New Vision Veterinary Technician Program. I was asked to come talk to you guys about the, the program and what I've gotten out of it. Most valuable aspect of the program is of course the, at the education. I've learned quite a bit about veterinary medicine and all the things that go along with that field of study. However, I've learned, I've also learned an awful lot about working alongside new people. The beauty of the BOSI's program is that it gives you a fresh start with the group of people, with a group of people containing many strangers. The acclimation to these conditions and the strategies to avoid conflict and still maintain your convictions is incredibly valuable. At the same time, I've had to learn how to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. As a person who's actually fairly allergic to dogs and cats, grooming days were always a struggle for me. But getting through these struggles made me realize what it takes to be a hu- helpful member of a team. An example of this is when we had to groom a pair of 100-pound Newfoundland's. I, when, when we were doing that, I'm not able to just focus on my single task. I'm the only person able to lift the dogs in my class. So I have to be able to be flexible and attentive at the job that I'm doing at the same time. Additionally, the advanced courses provide, provided by the New Vision's program have given me the opportunity to, to transition from college courses I was taking in high school to college courses I've been taking in a completely different setting. Outside of the educational value and experience, the animal science program has also allowed me, for me to flesh out my future plans and become, to become a vi- bison rancher and has given me realistic and attainable steps to reach that goal. Alongside all of that, I also get two college credits, which is very, very um, thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Are there any questions for Gordon from anyone on the board?
Jason?
I don't have, I don't have a question, but I have a statement. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Gordon, but I know his parents. And every time I see them post something about what he's doing, whether it's sport or Honor Society, it just seems like he has the, the right attitude for our district. A great representative of our school. And it just seems like he's in everything. If you go to a soccer game, look over and Gordon's getting everybody in the right frame of mind. I wish him the best in whatever he does.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, Gordon, thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear that you're able to pursue the animal science at BOSI's and get some college credit on top of it. And it sounds like it's preparing you for your future. We're sorry you're not going to raise bison here at, in our North Rose Wilkett School District, but we do wish you well in Montana.
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just to speak a little bit more off the cuff, I, I really do, I really do think that the Bose program has given me a lot. And I really do appreciate like everything that's been able to get me there. Like I've had a lot of help from counselors and I, I actually didn't get to visit the program when, when I first started because my grandma had just passed away. So I really went into it like almost completely blind and the, the experience was just very, very, it was very pleasant. It's, I've, I've got a lot out of it.
That's good to hear and it's good for the board, uh, board members to hear that because we want to make sure that other students have that ability to have the experience you're having as well. Very important. Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you very, uh, you, thank you all very much. I
Thank you. Have a good rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michael, would you like to move on to the next presentation?
Yes, absolutely. If I can just do a quick screen share with you and then I'm going to turn it over to Meg and she's going to actually start our video. So can you see my screen?
No.
Okay.
Yep, there it comes.
Okay. So just with us tonight, I just want to say thank you and welcome to Sheriff Barry Vertz, uh, North Rose Wilkett graduate. Those of you who had a chance to attend commencement last year, no Sheriff Vertz with our keynote speaker. He's somebody who served our community and our county very well. It's been an honor and a pleasure working with him over the years. And I've said to him many times, uh, I'm so thankful for him for what he's done for me personally, what he's done for me professionally and how he handles himself in the role of the Office of Wayne County Sheriff. You know, we think it's very fitting for us to basically recognize him and, and thank him for all of those efforts. And really just wanted to take a minute to say, you know, it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure. And we have a little thing that we want to, we, we want to share with everybody tonight in the community. So I'm going to ask Meg and if you could just kind of jump in and take over at this point. And, and go through with the video that we put together on his behalf. Hang on one sec. We got to get the audio worked out.
Don't you love technology these days?
It's a great thing when it works.
Hi Sheriff Vertz, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for our community over your long tenure as Sheriff of Wayne County. I wish you all the best in retirement.
Sheriff Vertz, I want to thank you for your service to the people of Wayne County throughout your law enforcement career. No matter the position, professionalism and dedication defined you. Your integrity, insightfulness and reliability all contributed to your success. As our sheriff, your expertise and high expectations brought heightened respect and efficiency to the department. Thank you for your leadership and willingness to serve. On behalf of the North Rose Wilkett's Board of Education, I especially want to thank you for your commitment of providing school resource officers to our schools during your tenure as Wayne County Sheriff. You expanded the position from simply providing safety to one of making personal connections with students, of providing helpful counsel to them and of showing them that law enforcement officers are actually friendly and caring people. Thank you for being an educator as well as the sheriff. And I also want to tell you how much your friendship has meant to me over the years and how much I appreciate all you've done for me, our community and the county. I'm proud of you for willing to take on the job of Wayne County Sheriff and all the responsibilities that go with it. And now that you'll soon be joining the ranks of retirees, I wish you well-deserved time for yourself, enjoyment with your family and happy days of relaxation and pleasure. Sheriff Barry Vertz, well done.
Your kind and caring heart have might so much to end our W.
We want to thank you very much.
We would also like to give you this picture painter as a token of our appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Vertz.
Sheriff Vertz, I just want to wish you the best of luck in retirement. Want to congratulate you on a fine career in law enforcement. And I want to thank you on behalf of the children of North Rose Wilkett and the county. Just want to thank you for your approach to working on fostering strong connections and building relationships through community policing. Your work with school districts has been quite remarkable in my opinion. And for me personally, I have always appreciated the fact that you were a phone call away. Whether I was starting out in administration as a young administrator at the building level or becoming a superintendent here at North Rose Wilkett. Just want to say that your guidance, support, mentorship meant the world to me. Appreciate you. So congratulations, best of luck. We wish you well. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much. You know, uh, I really have to thank North Rose Wilkett. It was my sophomore year when the two schools actually merged the student bodies together. Uh, in the sophomore, junior and senior year, I spent in North Rose Wilkett, you know, with my fellow classmates, many of them who I'm still in contact with now that live in the area. And when I'm, and when I'm with them, I'm just, I just say another local guy from Rose that maybe worked a little harder than a local guy and kind of pushed the envelope a little bit, but the high school was great to me. I, I said in my commencement remarks, uh, when I spoke to the graduating class, uh, this summer that, uh, you know, Carmen Pascarella was a big inspiration to me. I played four years of varsity baseball for him and really taught me about, uh, you know, doing your best. You know, even though you do get beat, uh, as long as you did your best, it was important. I remember my senior year, I was a little lackadaisical and he pulled me aside and he did what he had to do to get me motivated. I hit 413 that year with a wooden bat, uh, which is unheard of today. But, and then Kathy Pozowski, who was our, uh, class advisor, she was a trick teacher. And my senior year, she actually goaded me into taking trigonometry. I don't know how many seniors take trig their senior year now, but I, I did very well, nineties in the, the regions today thing. And she was one that really pushed me to go forward. But I will say this, when I graduated from North Rose Wilkett, I really didn't think I was smart enough to go to college. Uh, had some, I think, esteem issues back then. Worked a year, uh, ended up going to Erie Community College and then finishing up my bachelor's degree at Oswego State as I worked at the sheriff's office. But the school has been very good to me. My, my wife Sandra and our children, my entire family, I see a couple of my grandchildren in the picture there. I go back to when my children were in school and Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Egner were the school psychologists and helped us, uh, through some issues that we had with the school. You were wonderful. But all I can say is, you know, whether it's when you're in school as a student, uh, as a teacher, myself in law enforcement with my deputies and my corrections officer, court security officers, everything boils down to a personal connection. And none of us own anything when we work for a municipality or government. Really, the only thing we own is our integrity and our word. Uh, everything else the taxpayer owns. And I thought it was very important and my whole goal throughout my entire life was do the very best that I could do and to surround my people that I could make better and they could go on and do other things. And I think that was evident with, uh, my first under sheriff, Rick House, who went on to be our county administrator. Uh, so again, it was just for me, whether it was playing a team sport at North Rose Wilkett or in college or at the sheriff's office to make the team better, uh, not to be an individual, but to make the team better. So, uh, you know, I thank everybody uh, for this. I'm very proud to be a North Rose Wilkett alumni. My wife and I were going to winter in Florida and we're going to come back here in the summer and still live in the school district. So I look forward to, uh, you know, doing a lot more things with my family and with my grandchildren because truthfully, every minute of my life for the last 12 years, from the time I get up to the time I go to bed has been about the sheriff's office. I'd start my day about five o'clock in the morning. And after I get done here, I probably got about another hour's worth of work to get done. And I know when you're in administration and running the business end of a, uh, institution, that's what it takes. And, uh, I loved every minute of it through the good and the, and the difficult times, but the biggest thing was to support victims that had become, to make their life as whole as possible. And going back to the school resource officer, you know, when I really sat down and ran for sheriff, it's like in this county, 15,000 people go in and out of our school buildings and districts across the county. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone's safe because at the end of the day, we all want to go home and enjoy, uh, enjoy our time with our families and our loved ones. So thank you very much. This is very humbling. It's been an honor to be your sheriff. And I am so proud to be a North Rose Wilkett graduate.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Thank you so much. Truly.
Just, uh, Sheriff Vertz, just want to let you know, we have a, a plaque that we'd like to give you on behalf of the school district. You did recognize a few of your grandchildren in some of those pictures and on, on behalf of them and their classmates, I have some things that they've decorated for you. So that we'll hand off, but appreciate that. And Cindy, I'll turn it over to you and the rest of the board members for any comments. That's my superintendent's report and like I said, I appreciate being able to share that tonight and, and recognize Sheriff Vertz.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, anyone want to, uh, add to it? Linda? Linda Egner?
Got to unmute. There we go. I just wanted to make a comment to Barry that we all wish you the very best in retirement, but we know you're not really finished with doing good things. Congratulations on your retirement.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just so people know, uh, Linda's husband, the supervisor of the town of Huron is my public safety chair. Uh, and we've done some really good things the last year and a half. So thank you and thank Phil.
Yeah. Uh, Paul, Paul Stansky.
Sheriff Vertz, uh, please come on out to the varsity baseball field again. Yeah, I know you've spent a lot of time there as a student. Hey, please welcome back. We could use your support and would love you to help out in any way.
So I, I will tell you this, at 65 and a half years old, I can still get down to my catcher's stance and give the signals. I might take you up on that a couple of times.
It's the getting back up that's the problem, right?
Not a problem. I can do it.
Jason Sloan.
Hi Sheriff Vertz, I just wanted to thank you for your approach to policing. Your commitment to those connections, um, I am certain that over the last 13 years has influenced other people who you to have the same approach. And I think that those, uh, those traits and those ways of looking at policing are going to be seen for quite a while moving forward. So I, I really think that you did your best and you represented North Rose Wilkett in a great way. And I look forward to seeing, uh, how the next sheriff compares to the approach that you took because yours was, uh, one in a million in my opinion.
Well, thank you very much. And I, I hope that next year and the year after, the sheriff's office is better than it is now. And just like at the school district and you folks on the Board of Education, we hope that our institutions continue to enhance and provide better services to the people that we serve. So thank you very much, Jason.
I said it, I said a young love.
I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing the value of our young children, learning the value of good police work and knowing that they are people not something to be afraid of or run from. And for that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Azella. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you, Barry, for being a community member, strong in our community as well as being very loyal to your, uh, sheriffs that work with you on patrol and whatever they do. And I go back to the community part where I sat in your father's barber shop and I heard all the conversation going on there, which is all very positive. And I think was the basis for the family growing up in our community. Thank you for your good job.
Oh, thanks, John. I think we both missed that $5 haircut.
It wasn't just the haircut, it was the, all the talk that went on with it.
And Tina Reed?
Best wishes, you know, if you, you miss public service, you can always run for the school board.
I'm going to be in Florida half the year. You know, I really don't know what I'm going to do. Uh, I have no plans. Uh, I know that I'm going to decompress from January to April, just kind of hang out. Uh, you know, I, I work probably 75, 80 hours a week, uh, constantly. Going from there to zero, I, I think I have enough things to fill my day. Uh, my real concern is to make sure that I keep my mind sharp. So I've already made arrangements to subscribe to the New York Times to read that cover to cover, uh, when I'm sitting around the pool in the afternoon in Florida to try to keep the coconut active. But I, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do, uh, you know, for 45 years, I've been at the sheriff's office and it's all been about the sheriff's office. My wife calls it my second girlfriend. Uh, because every time they called out the door, I went because somebody needed our help at the sheriff's office. So I, I really don't know. It's kind of like a blank canvas. I've said to people, Howard Keikendall, who I respected greatly, he told me when he retired, he said, it's kind of like being 12 and 13. You go out and play ball, do what you got to do. And as long as you're home for supper, everything's good. So we'll see how it goes.
Good luck.
Very good. Well, thank you so much, Barry. We'll be, we'll be watching to see what you're, you're up to next.
Time will tell, but you know, I'd really like to thank my wife because Sandra has been the one that's been so committed to the job. And all the nights I've been out and everything and I'm finding that she's been retired for five and a half years and I'm going to make her, uh, you know, one of her visions is she loves the beach and the sun and everything is to wear flip flops 365 days a year. So I'm going to make that happen for you because without her, I don't know that I would be as successful as I am.
Nice tribute. Very good. Thank you. We wish you well and we'll bid you good night.
Go Coopers.
Yay. Go, go.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Barry.
Superintendent, thank you very much. Call anytime.
Bye.
Bye bye. Bye. Thank you.
Michael, we'll move on to the next, uh, presentation.
Yep, absolutely. Gary, if you want to go ahead and start off with your portion, I know, uh, Ben is here with us tonight. If you want to just give a quick introduction to Ben and we can go over some of the particulars for next week's vote and then we'll jump into your five-year projection.
Yes, thank you. Um, and I would love to be able to introduce Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors who is with us here tonight to, uh, give us a kind of, kind of a brief summary of the financing. And eight aspects of our upcoming project that's going to be voted on on the 16th. Ben, uh, I've had the pleasure of working with for, uh, a few years now, and I just want to say that Fiscal Advisors, um, I have worked with for many, many years now. Um, I've known, as I've said, Ben for several years. But everybody at Fiscal Advisors, who are our expert financial advisors, they are the go-to people in upstate New York, central New York, western New York and beyond, when it comes to, um, guiding school districts through their capital projects. And in every way, so, uh, they help maximize our building aid. Um, and they get us started. Uh, they're, they're with us at the beginning of the project through the end of the project. They coordinate all of our, um, debt borrowing, whether it's bonds or short-term, uh, notes on anticipation notes and other things. They're the ones that coordinate all this stuff. They are the ones that, uh, help us keeping compliance. When we issue debt, we have to be in compliance with SEC rules. So there's a lot of coordination, um, uh, that I've always had with, uh, our financial advisors. And it's always been a great relationship and, and I know, um, Ben is, is one of their experts also. So, um, with that, I'll let Ben take over and give us a little, little, um, summary of, of financing of our upcoming project.
I appreciate the great introduction. Thanks, Gary. And it's been my pleasure to work with the district for many years. So um, I'm happy to be talking with you tonight. Um, obviously this method of communication isn't the most preferred. Would rather be there in person, but we all understand. So, so I was asked to just speak briefly tonight about the financing of the 11.1 million dollar capital project, which the Board of Education approved a resolution to move forward with that voter, um, voter approval in December. In its most simplistic form, the project will have no impact on the district residents financially. So there are two main funding sources when it comes to capital projects. The first is the state building aid. Now the district has a building aid ratio of 83.5%. So in a nutshell, for every hundred dollars that's spent, for every under hundred eight-able dollars that's spent, you get $83.50 back on the dollar. The, the other remaining money in this project will be made up of the district's capital reserve. So the district does have a capital reserve, which was voter approved and funded with excess money throughout various fiscal years. The only way that money can be used is again to ask the voters to approve it, which will be done as part of the proposition. The money must be allocated for capital projects and for capital improvement projects such as this. So those two funding sources, the total is 11.1 million. The capital reserve amount to be approved is 3,036,697. And the difference, which is a little over $8 million, will be made up in the form of building aid. The district will finance the project over 15 years and the debt payments will essentially equal the state aid payments coming back. So that's why we can say it's no tax impact because the annual payments that the district will be making to finance the $8 million portion will be equal to or less than the amount of revenue or building aid coming back from the state. So that's in a nutshell, the, the, um, financing of the project. We've taken care to look at the, um, the proposed scope of work to make sure that it qualifies for building aid. We've also been very, I would say conservative in a lot of our estimates because as everybody knows, this time in this financial times, interest rates are very low. So we have accounted for what-if scenarios, what if interest rates start to rise, what if inflation occurs? So we have all those contingencies built in so that we can reasonably say to the district residents that there'll be no tax increase for this project. I'll pause there and, and certainly entertain any questions that the board may have.
I do have your slide. I could try to share.
That would be great.
Throw that up.
Sure.
Can you guys see that? I'm not sure. Can you guys see that? I'm not sure. You can see it?
No, not yet. There it is.
Oh, sorry, Gary. In its most simplistic form, this is it. Two funding sources, and we always just like to essentially highlight the no local, no new local share. Doesn't mean taxes won't go up because the budget will increase every year and there's other pieces of the budget, but for the actual capital component of the budget, we are gonna be at a no impact.
Okay, I'm back with you now. All right. So are there any questions for Ben regarding the financing of this project? It's, it's, it's the, what we all try, try to strive for when we put together a project, to have the zero tax impact. So that's just a, usually comes down to a balancing act of how much local funds, by the way of our capital reserve money, we can apply towards the given project. So I think Mr. Pollan's done a great job in delivering the message about this project and the usefulness of it. And so we're hoping for a, a good outcome on the vote next week.
I think the, the board members truly understand the benefit of this project as far financially with the state help. I hope the voters realize the, the benefit of the state aid. The capital projects are the way buildings and ma- big maintenance projects are done in today's world. And if they don't approve it, then maintenance has to be done regardless. And then they, they foot the whole bill, which is really a waste of our tax dollars that we've already paid because we wouldn't get the benefit. So I'm hoping that our people do understand that.
I think that's a great point, and improvements such as these, when they're bundled together in a, in a capital improvement project, as you mentioned, qualify for that eighty-three percent aid. If they're just done as a, I would say as a Band-Aid or just as a repair in the budget, it's dollar-for-dollar taxpayer, and its additional taxpayer money, it must be raised in an annual budget vote. So a very, very good point.
Okay, hearing no other questions on that, I think we can proceed to the next part.
Okay, Ben, thank you very much.
All right, take care, everybody.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, since I apparently succeeded in sharing one screen there, I am going to try it again. And we will move on to the five-year financial plan that I've put together. I'll give you a moment. Can everyone see that?
No.
Gary, I can share it for you if you would like.
That might work better. I'm not sure why that one didn't work. Thank you, Tina.
There it is. Thank you.
Is that what you, that's what you want, correct?
Yes, that's great. So so I know the board's been getting a five-year projection annually. That's a required document. It's required. Several years ago, this, this became a required document just to share with the board that the the district does have a financial plan moving forward. Okay? So, and what, what we've done over the past is provide the board with three different scenarios. So we've continued that in this presentation. However, I think you see right off the bat that this format is a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. I think what you've gotten in the past is more detail on all the revenues, more detail on some specific expenditures. However, my model that I've used, I've just tried to keep things simple, a little more readable, if you would. And so I, I do have this format. And if you were to compare it with what you've received in the, in the past, I think it, it does follow the same kind of process where from one year to the next, we have a beginning fund balance, that top line, and we work our way down to where we end up at the end of the year. So in this slide, and rather than talk to each slide, each slide is just a different set of assumptions on what our estimated revenues may be and what our projected expenditures may be in the given year. But I'll speak to this slide here because frankly, the, the trend lines will be the same from one year to the next. Okay? And I do want to say that this is my qualifier on projecting revenues and expenditures out into the future. Because what I will often say is, I do not have a crystal ball. None of us really have a crystal ball. We don't know you know, what's going to happen in terms of the economy, the market, where our revenue streams, you know, how solid is our state aid from one year to the next. So both on the revenue side, on the expenditure side, we try to come up with reasonable assumptions here. So right at the bottom, the very bottom note, I, I just kinda qualify tho- those items that we don't know exactly, but we can make some reasonable estimates, and we can have a plan. So this five-year plan, even though on this slide you will see some red numbers as we progress to the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four through the twenty-five, twenty-six years, you'll see some red numbers in the operating surplus indicating deficit. What this still does, and each of these plans will accomplish, if we hold our spending to the levels that are being assumed in each of these scenarios, we still show financial viability through twenty-five, twenty-six. We will always do that. And as we move along from one year to the next, we make adjustments to our spending. If we can't control all the revenue that's coming in, and we do want to, as the board knows, mo- about a third of our revenue comes from our tax levy. And almost two-thirds comes from state aid. We have less than ten percent coming from other factors such as sales tax, interest earnings, charges and that sort of thing. But this scenario is a very conservative scenario when it comes to projecting revenues. So over to the left area of the screen, this particular scenario is projecting an annual increase in revenues of two percent and projected expenditures of three and a quarter percent. And that's, that's generally where we start off each year with our budget. Our trend line for expenditure increases from one year to the next is actually closer to four and four-plus percent. So with this, this assumes is that we will hold our spending, we will increase our spending at the rate of inflation or other cost factors. We will ensure that we keep our budget, budget to budget, within three and a quarter percent in this scenario. And it gives us a fairly conservative estimate on the revenues. So I just wanna talk a minute about the trends here. Under that one and a quarter percent gap from one year to the next, that gap being the difference between revenues and expenses, we can still maintain viability through twenty-five, twenty-six. You look at the very bottom right number at the end of that twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's just about a million dollars. Okay, so although we, although this scenario would show an operating loss, I would actually say that by the time we get there, we're gonna have an operating loss. No, we're gonna make some other adjustments. But under this scenario, that's, that's what this shows. What this shows is, and each of these show an operating surplus amount in the middle of those columns, right? And the trend there is the operating surplus continually declines. Well, that's because there's a gap between the projected revenues and expenses, okay? But what we do, and the next line says projected transfers to reserves. So every year, we, we hope to at least maintain our four percent fund balance, right? Then we also have, I hope to have some additional surplus that we can transfer to those reserves. So this scenario, like the other scenarios, will show a decreasing ability to transfer surplus to reserves and an increasing reliance on the use of reserves to fund our, our, our budget from year to year. Okay, again, I just wanna say that this is a scenario. And when you plug in some different factors, for instance, if revenues actually come in at three and a quarter percent and projected expenses hold at three and a quarter, this all changes. There's no operating sur- no operating deficit from one year to the next. So, so our viability continues, right, from one year to the next. So that in a nutshell is, is a plan for you. Again, this is based on assumptions and various scenarios. So do we have any questions? And I think we, we can probably go back to the main screen, Tina. Thank you.
John?
Gary? Yeah. When you do expenses, do you allow them to increase at a high typical amount, let's say for security, insurance, health insurance?
John, you're breaking up here. I don't-
I know. A percentage do kind of those things.
And you're breaking up.
Okay, I think I can under- I understand the question.
I wondered what expenses-
Right. Okay, so, so each of these scenarios, as I had mentioned, right now, when I project actual expense, actual expenses, I am projecting a little bit more of an increase from one year to the next. But to sustain viability in the five-year plan, we know that we have to cut back on those projected expenses. We have to cut back in certain areas. You will hear us, particularly in the January meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna have our first really full-blown budget presentation, right? So we'll, we'll talk about some areas of the budget that are jumping up quite a bit. But we're going to have to make adjustments elsewhere in the budget to make that work. So if I see the bu- budget jumping up four to five percent right now, I know that we're gonna have to bring that down. And that what, that's what this scenario assumes, that we will maintain a, a level of spending consistent with our revenues. Or, or get that much closer, and maybe a little more reliance on reserves or appropriating fund balance, that, that sort of thing, to keep our, our, our budget from one year to the next in balance. Does, does that help?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? I guess you did a wonderful job explaining that, Gary. And it, I guess if the board doesn't have questions, they do understand what you're saying, and we're glad to be complying with the five-year, the five-year plan that we have to do.
Well, if you, if there's ever any questions, you can always reach out.
Thank you. We will. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next, number three, the reports and correspondence. Starting with the high schools. Wanna introduce that, Michael?
Sure. So Scott Bradley joined tonight by his school leadership team. I'm gonna turn it over to him and his team, a bunch of dynamic individuals that are on screen with him tonight. Really looking forward to seeing this presentation come together. As you're aware, school leadership team, a bunch of key stakeholders that really are a part of the school improvement plan and works with Scott and Jason hand-in-hand to make this project come to life. Take it back to the respective colleagues in the departments and really bring our, our vision to fruition. So Scott, why don't you go ahead and jump in?
Can everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, good evening. Gonna straighten my tie because I saw myself in that presentation, the Sheriff Berth, and I thought, man, I'm looking a little crooked, so make sure that I put myself together a little better tonight. Thank you first and foremost for giving us the opportunity to share some of the things that have been going on at the high school so far this year. Before we get started, I just want to introduce the members of the school leadership team here at the high school who have joined tonight and will be presenting. So tonight we have Carrie Merritt, who works in our Alternative Learning Center and is a primary role in there. Amy Wiktorowitz, who is a Spanish teacher and the instructional coach here at the high school. We have Adam Hall, he was a social studies teacher. Brandon Kapsinski, math teacher. And Nick Wiljack, who teaches science here at the high school. Also, we have Jason Shetler, who's the assistant principal. To start, we want to share just a little bit of the rationale that went into the development of our plan.
So two of the people that you just heard about from the, the SLT were directly involved in the creation of the Strategic Action Plan that includes the mission and the vision that you'll see reflected throughout our presentation this evening. So you'll hear things, you know, where students are proud of their accomplishments and prepared for their future, where experiences are developed to help every student reach their individualized potential.
In addition to making sure that we support the Strategic Action Plan, we also looked at relevant data when developing our plan. And it's a little bit different this year than normal due to the pandemic. So typically, we would look at region's data as it allows us to look at a consistent standardized assessment from year to year to see how our growth is. However, last year, only four regions exams were administered and students weren't required to take them. So as a result of that, we don't have really reliable data that gives us an accurate representation of what student progress was, and, and we couldn't use that to help us move forward well. So consequently, we ended up using proficiency and mastery rates from our core content areas to help us as a guide. So the numbers that you see here include all students enrolled in courses from grades nine through twelve for each of the core areas. You know, pretty consistent there for the most part, from area to area. See, science was slightly higher. One of the things, students pursuing advanced regional diplomas and things like that tend to stick it out in science a little more so that, you know, students in those higher-level courses tends to do very well. And that's kinda represented there. So we'll keep this in mind, and you know, region's exams are planned to be administered as normal in June of twenty-twenty-two. So we'll be looking for, meeting our goal of proficiency on those exams of ninety percent. And then looking back to when they were last administered in June of twenty-nineteen for comparison's sake there, and trying to increase the mastery rates that we had at that time. Our goals for partnership here is as we will utilize area organizations to provide experiences and exposure that engage students and families that will develop pride in our school community, or schooling community, sorry. We've had a lot of different opportunities for, for community to come into the building, including freshman orientation, open house. We had a fantastic showing at homecoming, as many, as well as many other athletic events. We have a partnership with American- We have a partnership with the American Federation for Suicide Prevention, who presented to our parents in the community and have also presented in our English classes. They also plan to present to each grade level before the end of the school year. Our second week of school brought in Sweethearts and Heroes, which was an amazing program that helped work with students and staff talking about empathy and hope. We thought it was a fantastic way to, to start the school year and we really are looking forward to continuing that partnership with them as well. The Optimal Health Grant has given us an opportunity to provide additional support and interventions for at-risk students. As well as we've hosted a Rochester Area College Fair. In the fall, students got a chance to speak with admissions counselors and at that situation. We really value our community partnerships with organizations such as the Elks Lodge and the Wiltgood Rotary, as we, we go through different portions of our, our school year. Parent Square has been a phenomenal resource for us this year. It's given us a, a chance to increase our communications with parents and families. And we've heard several, from several parents who don't get a chance to check their emails as often, that this, uh, this form of communication has been definitely beneficial. We had, a couple of years ago, we started a high school newsletter. On average, we get about seventeen hundred views per newsletter addition that we put out. It's sent to every parent and faculty member that's involved with the high school. And it's also posted on our district Facebook page as well. We have, currently have approximately five students who are working through our workforce development program and we continue to add more students as new companies and opportunities continue to join our program.
Hi, I'll be talking about the equity goal. The goal is to create a safe learning environment where all individuals feel welcomed and valued, while celebrating the diversity of all stakeholders through learning experiences and community events. We, as a building, realize that this goal can really only be accomplished if we create a, a building that's kind of a hub for education as well as community events and communication. It's not lost on us that the last eighteen months have been really difficult and kind of highlighted some of the challenges. But we're kind of bouncing back this year and we're committed to work to make the building a positive place to engage, and engaging for each student. Staff this year are spending much more time on social emotional learning, building those stronger relationships that can really foster success in students, especially students that may not have had easy success in the past. By building those strong relationships, we hope that we can kind of work towards what, what we used to call a traditional school year. One way that we hope to do that is the athletic department is, is still committed to not charging admission for any of the athletic contests and encouraging students to come out. It's, we remain one of the only districts in the county that does not charge for admission to specifically soccer and basketball games. So encouraging students to come out may be building a, a sense of community wi- within the school. Other events that are newly possible this year include the, the return of instrumental and choir concerts, recent voice recital at the high school. We're now able to have the art gallery openings and technology showcases to kind of show off the, the hard work that some students that may not always get the spotlight will get to, uh, show off a little of what they're proud of. The social studies and English departments are making concerted efforts to make sure that some of the content that we present comes from racially and ethnically diverse groups, whether that's authors or characters or figures, in order to maybe establish some more, uh, some more relevance for students that may not have engaged before, not have, not have bought in. Maybe if we can change some of the, the sources that we're using, it might build some bridges for students. This year, there's also the return of all of our clubs and extracurricular activities, so students are able to explore their interests and, and build on them. Those include a new club, the NRW Kindness Club, being hosted by two teachers that are hoping to build a positive environment within the building. There will soon be a proposal of a gay-straight alliance. The goal is to foster a community of acceptance and inclusion for each student in the building. And also, there are initial plans to look to establish an academic letter similar to a varsity letter for students that can, uh, choose to put their efforts into academic mastery rather than athletics. So we're, we're really trying to branch out to build those connections and provide more opportunities for all students to shine. And I think we've got a great start on that and we've got a lot of potential as well.
Our next goal involves social emotional learning. We will work with our staff and students to ensure that we validate individual needs and so that we can be responsive to individuals' emotions and needs. Bringing all the students back together for the first time since March of two thousand and twenty, we knew the importance of focusing on the social emotional needs of our students. Our high school staff and local agencies have been working hard to address areas of concern for all the students at our school. Our new Cougar values have given us a place to start in reteaching the important skills that we feel will help prepare our students for their future paths. Additionally, our awesome MTSS team surveyed the students and the staff on their top concerns for the school year and we've been targeting different areas to work on based upon their responses. This has been done through student-created videos, community circles, forum presentations, and staff professional development. Our staff has also worked closely with SEL expert Erica Ebert, who incorporate effective strategies to support the social emotional needs of our students. We are currently in the process of identifying any students who do not have at least one go-to person in the school through a trusted adult survey, so we can work to get to help them, work to get them the support that they need. The SEL of our staff is also a top priority. We have also surveyed our staff to make sure that they all have a trusted colleague in the building, while also hosting optional staff community circles and For You Fridays through our high school SEL network team. Lastly, our high school staff is working hard to celebrate our students. Each month, we've been recognizing students and staff who have showcased our monthly Cougar values, while also doing other steps like sending positive postcards home and recognizing students with awards in forum.
High school has remained data-driven and focused on trying to improve some of our student results. Towards the end of the year, we have a dry, I want to call it like a dry run coming up in January, where we will be administering some regions exams for students that qualified in the past to take them and they were either canceled or they don't currently qualify to have those exemptions on their, on their transcripts. In order to do that, we went back through all of the test scores from every student in the building to make sure that they were properly set up to receive academic intervention and tests and be able to study for the test for January, and then it'll happen again in June. The goal is to, for ninety percent of students to be proficient on, on the regions exams at the end of the year in June, but we're gonna try to do a little bit of a dry run in January. We continue our ongoing professional development for teachers to ensure high-quality personalized instruction. After every quarter, after every marking period, we are analyzing all of the individual classroom data, data sets to make sure that our students are performing in, in a way that we think they should be able to at this point. We've expanded the Alternative Learning Center in order to provide responsive and relevant programming in an effort. Our numbers have increased substantially this year from last year in both student and, and staff resources, which has been excellent. We were able to provide academic support across the building along with SEL support. And we also have a lot of students that are sort of pulling it in a little bit as far as remote instruction and identifying what they need to keep on track and hopefully getting them, getting them through their third and fourth years of school. That number is kind of fluid, it changes on a weekly basis. For example, today, we had six students come in here that we haven't seen before because they had a particularly difficult assignment they needed help on. So they came in to work with us down here in the ALC.
Our final goal that we'll talk about tonight is our financial goal. Building leaders will work directly with departments to ensure that resources allocated align with the core beliefs and goals of the district's strategic action plan. With these funds, we were able to increase offerings for the LIFT program through community schools programming. Just a few examples of these offerings are tutoring, arts and crafts, cooking, sports, and social emotional support. We are also looking to offer driver's ed courses and a geo-tech program that links mathematics and technology. Allocating these funds to the LIFT program at the high school ensures we are meeting the needs of all of our students and families. The picture at the top of the slide represents one more example of how we are utilizing funds to meet the needs of all of our students. We were able to purchase all band and choir students matching performance attire for the winter recital.
Thank you very much, that wraps up our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
John?
Well, congratulations to, as, and that report, there's a lot packed into what you just said, everyone said. Congratulate the local community, the Elks Club and the Rotary Club and the boosters for all they've done for our kids. I think so often we know it, but we don't really recognize them. I also like the academic letter and all the community stuff that the high school is entertaining. Some of the parent square for communications, uh, the art shows are coming back, the concerts. Those are all community builders and that's a really great thing to have. The other is the Alternative Learning Center. The numbers there are magnificent. I mean, it's too bad we have to have it, but on the other hand, after coming off the pandemic, I've read so many articles stating that not just our school, but schools all over the country who have had shutdowns because of the pandemic are having students who are behind need some extra help in some ways. And for our schools to, I think, really have that kind of program and being as effective as it is is a major, major thing for our community. So thank you, good report.
Thank you, and that, that, just to add on to the ALC, you know, Carrie kind of understates how hard they work in there and having, uh, one of those students graduate just last month. That was a student who should have graduated in June of twenty twenty, right after I started. And so, you know, there's some stick-wittness there for them to keep going and working and getting that kid through, you know, quite a bit later, but it's gonna really benefit him in the long run.
Yeah.
I agree.
Anyone else?
Also fun to be able to deliver a diploma a couple of months into school, that's always nice.
And, and equally good to receive it, too. Yeah. Anyone else? It's overwhelming with what, what's going on at the high school and how you really are, are working so hard to get our kids through in a good way. So they come out with pride and, and ready, ready to take on the world. Thank you so much, all of you teachers for what you do, administrators. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to our liaison reports. Starting with the elementary school, Isetta, do you have anything to report tonight?
Yes, I have quite a bit, they've been very busy over there. Um, they've just finished their first trimester along with the rest of the school district. And they've seen a lot of growth academically, behaviorally, and emotionally through the last few, couple of months. And report cards for the first thirteen weeks will be going out tomorrow. And the elementary student has their student council again this year. Mrs. Summer, I believe, I hope I didn't murder her name too badly. And Mrs. Camp had their first meeting and there were eleven members pres- present. The members shared their hopes and dreams for what they'd like to see the student council address this year. And they also have some special days coming up. They have a Grinch Day, they have a gingerbread day, which is my favorite, and the Polar Express Day. And then the students made recommendations to the school leadership team of what they'd like to see happen for those celebration days. And also, Linda, I believe it's your niece, Jessica Agner, no, it's your daughter, isn't it? Jessica Agner?
Yes.
Contacted the school, she wanted to donate some books to the library, brand-new books. So they, school accepted graciously and they have already started to receive many new and varied titles and, background for the children to take out book, new books for their, to help fill in their reading logs that they have every, every month. And the, the reading logs are through our community reads. They've already be, like I said, they've already received many new books and they're very excited to receive more. And that was the report for this one.
Thank you very much, thank you, a busy place there.
They are.
John, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Well, while we were sitting here, I got a report from a, an, an audience member at the Leavenworth Middle School for a band, uh, holiday concerts going on right now. Which my grandchild will not be pleased that I'm here and not there. But they are doing a lot of things that are middle school type things for, between now and Christmas, the holidays. They have the winter concert tonight and then Spirit Week starts up on December thirteenth. And, and the typical stuff, they have the pajama day, comfy, comfy day. They have a holiday outfit day, which you wear your favorite outfit, and then your ugly sweater and Cougar pride. And I can reflect on all those things because I would have the ugly tie contest locked in really well. They're also gonna have a door decoration contest and it's gonna represent the Cougar values. So it is tied to, uh, the values that the Cougar stands for and it's sponsored by student council. And, and they're gonna vote, the students and the faculty will vote on probably the most outlandish and most spectacular doors there. It sounds like a typical middle school environment, which is really good. It, it's the kind of thing that kids remember for the rest of their lives, what they did in school. So that's what I have for that one.
Great, thank you, John. Yes, middle schoolers never lack for spirit. Linda, do you have anything to report from the high school?
I do, some of the things have already been touched upon in the wonderful presentation that we just had. One of the things that I did want to mention that was part of that is that at the concert coming up on December sixteenth, which is also the day for the vote for the capital proposition, when people come in to vote, they can attend the concert because voting goes until nine and the concert begins at six. And if they do attend, they will see that there are dresses and tuxes for all the students that are involved that they'll be wearing, which will be great for them because it will, I think it will be wonderful for them to feel like they're part of a professional group because they're all dressed that way and, and I hope it's a source of pride for them. I do know that student council and the leadership team that presented tonight has been putting effort into social emotional learning there. They did mention that teachers are getting together as well and spending some time together. Also, something that wasn't mentioned was that the Cougar cupboard through the MVP healthcare system with Carrie Merritt's help has gotten some new shelving, which really helps it to be better organized for folks that are coming in. So that's a great improvement. And last week, lastly, a new counselor started in the building to help students. So they're all very positive things and I'm happy to report it.
Thank you. Would you like to continue with four county school boards association, Linda?
Sure. Recently, the Board of Directors met and during that meeting, annually, there's a review of finances. And our own Lucinda Collier presented changes for policies as the chairman of the policy committee, which were approved. So that was a good and productive meeting. For four county legislative committee, we had- For four county legislative committee, we have worked on and we have ready to present to the state the, our, our concerns that we put together. There's actually several areas that we think the really need a lot of attention, equity and predictability and funding. Mental health and academics and social and emotional learning for all students and staff. Staffing needs equitable internet. Those are all key areas that we really are focusing on and I know superintendents as well have shared those concerns. I, there is a copy of the 2021 state positions that Tina St. John has and I'm going to ask her to send that out to board members because the bullets under each of those areas give a little bit more detail. We will be meeting again this coming Saturday and we're going to start to address federal propositions, but that isn't due until mid to late February. So we do have time to finish completing those. And, and that's it for the legislative committee, too.
Thank you. While we're on four county, I, I'd also like to share with board members that Tuesday night I attended the, a professional development program at four county. And David Little from Rural Schools, he's the executive director, was speaking. And it, it was really an enlightening program. But he was speaking mostly on the inequity that we rural schools, our kids in our schools experienced in contrast to the suburb and even city schools. He made a big point of, of saying that, first of all, our legislators in Albany who have the power and are in positions of, of, of real influence are generally from Albany and then downstate. They have no idea what, what it is for our students and for our, for these rural schools and what we're, what we face. And I'm just going to run down this list for you because, and I don't think I have them all. There's such an inequity between, first of all, family income overall and the inability of rural families to provide outside experiences or support that the suburb and the wealthy district parents have, are able to provide their kids. And it means that our kids, it's, it's just not equitable for our kids. The, the, the suburb and downstate schools can offer so much advanced, so many advanced courses or expanded experience courses. And that where rural schools need to use our state aid just to provide our basic courses, these other schools are using that state aid that they get, even though it's smaller, but they're using it for the expanded and the advanced courses. So when the state cuts, cuts our, our revenues midway in the year or even at the beginning of a year, it affects us much, much more greatly than it does the others. And he, he spent quite a bit of time discussing the state aid formula that has been tweaked over the years and the formula isn't just what you think of as an algebra, algebraic formula. It's a book of formula. And the legislators, because they're from Albany and downstate, make sure, of course, that their constituents don't lose any aid when times get tough, even though they don't need it to the degree that we do. He, he said, right now, we're, rural schools are in a pretty good shape in that federal funding is coming directly to us instead of through the state where it gets filtered out in different places. And that during these years while that's happening, that we in, in rural schools should be should be contacting our legislators and telling them, you need to get going on that formula. You need to get it reworked and you need to make sure that, that we get what we need so that our students have an equitable education with those in other areas. He mentioned the teacher difficulty rural schools have in attracting teachers and then in keeping teachers. He mentioned that teachers, new, new teachers, new cert, with certification, if they'll go into an urban school and teach for a certain number of years, will have their student loans waived. But that doesn't, they don't encourage that for the rural schools. And we have equally difficult times trying to attract teachers. And part of the problem of, of teachers is that in rural America, we don't have the housing that attracts them. And if to keep them, we also don't have, we don't have the housing available to keep a teacher in the area. So he, it really pointed out that education in New York State for, for all students is not equitable. And we work hard in rural school districts trying to do the best we can for, for our kids. But so much of it comes down to what we can afford. And if you ever have a chance to hear David Little speak, it's well worth listening to him. Sorry to have given you such a big lecture on that, but I was kind of fired up after I'd heard him. Linda?
Well, I did mention, for the legislative committee, last year, we did have an opportunity to speak with representatives and Pam Halming and Tom O'Meara were there. In January, we are going to also be connecting again with Pam Halming and I'm thinking I will bring up some of those points.
He, he made a really good point. He said his job as director of Rural Schools Association is he educates the legislators. But that it's our job to make them care. And he was saying that, you know, they, they all have full-time people who are just going through Facebook, going through newspapers, letting, letting the legislator know what's going on in, in their constituency so that they can write a letter and say congratulations or whatever, thus ensuring their votes for the next election. But he said, what really helps is that if, if we as, as boards, as teachers, as the public would, would contact them through Facebook, whatever, they're, they're watching it. And tell them specifically what you could have done if you had had more money. Specifically, how, whatever they did do helped your student or your district so that they care. And he said, that's, that's what we need. So I think four county is very straw, is a strong group for influencing legislators. Again, they're educating. But it's the rest of us who need, need to provide them with the, the facts of, of really how, how our kids, our school district benefits. He said that the legislators expect him to be, be on their backs. But when some, somebody in the fire company writes specifically or a grandma writes specifically about something good or how it's impacting, how, whatever is impacting their grandchildren, that's where it begins to make them care so they fight harder. Very interesting. All right, um. Let's see. Oh, handbook. Handbook is moving along. We will be meeting again in Jan. We've finished all of the, we finished all of the written part of the handbook in going over it. And we'll be meeting in January to make sure that the appendices all are reflecting exactly what is there and then we'll be presenting it to board members for your perusal hopefully by the end of January. So be looking for that. And policy committee, Paul, you want to speak? Paul, are you in Florida?
Oh, I, I can't tell that. That's a classified information.
I see. All right. Whatever you say.
Yes, I am. And I noticed that I've been kind of, I, I lose internet once in a while. So if you lose me, it isn't because I don't care. It's just because it's having, I'm having some continuity issues. I did want to highlight some of the highlights that we had on our policy. We've got three of them before the board, 1510. When you look at that, there's a big yellow section on that, which of course attracts your attention. Really, we have been complying with the new mandate from Governor Hochul was regarding to get information out to our constituents before our board meeting. But we didn't have it incorporated in our policy. So really, it was a, it was a simple addition. We'd already been doing it. Now we've added it. But I do want to, please, board members, read the paragraph above that one also because that deals with how we get information and how we request information to get into the agenda. So that's really important. Probably more important than the big yellow paragraph. That's it on that one. 1320 is public participation at board meetings. When you look at that, you see a lot of red and a lot of changes. Again, I want to highlight a few. We changed the word citizens to residents. We felt it was more important to have residents with students in the district speak to us than a citizen who may not have residents, who may not have students in the district. So that was an important change to us. Coming down to the next paragraph, we've, we've expanded the number of people that can speak at a board meeting. So we went from a five minute to a three minute in order to give us from six people to 10 people. Now, the very last sentence on that paragraph is, is critical, too. Because we want to make sure everyone understands, you can't transfer your minutes. So it isn't like John and, and Cindy, Linda and Isadora can all give their time to Jason. No, each, each one individually. Going down in that paragraph, in the policy further, you'll see another highlight. The board president may also ask the speaker for clarification. You'll recall that for the last couple of years I've been on the board, you know, we announced that we will not respond in any way. Well, that's been expanded now statewide to say, you can be courteous. And also, if this, if, if there's something that needs clarification, the board president, the board president can ask for clarification. So lots of, I think, improvements to that policy about public participation. Last one was a gender neutral single occupancy bathrooms. Real simple. We're already complying. It's a required policy. It's almost like we have to do it. So again, we're, we're already doing it in the district. It's just a matter that we, we must have a policy that says we're doing it. So there it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
And please forward me any questions or, you know, by email or call me.
Okay. Yeah, the policy is very important and it's hard work, working on those policies. So that we, we get it correct and we get it to reflect what we are doing and what we must do. Thank you. So that'll be coming up for a second read in January. That completes reports and correspondence. Tina, is there anyone who's asked to speak to the board tonight?
I did not have anyone contact me.
All right. Thank you.
Cindy, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask that we dismiss our administrators.
Absolutely.
At this point in time, thank you all for participating. They're going to have a great night. It's been a long day. So thank you all.
Thank you. Good night. And we come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Tina Reed and Paul? Any questions or discussion? Jason?
That takes us right through the end, right? Except with the exception of the roll call vote. Is there a roll call vote?
I don't think so. It takes us through page six.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's, I looked at something wrong. It's not a roll call vote. Thank you.
Any, anyone? Not hearing anyone. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, give me a wave, please. All right, good. Motion is carried. Now we're on page six. And we're at good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? I think the good news was hearing the presentations tonight, all of them. We, we heard a lot of good things and can see that the district is moving in a, in a positive way.
Very good.
Cindy, I did as my duty, I went to a middle school swim meet modified against Williamson. And the activity was really extreme in the pool and they did a good job, both teams, a lot of good sportsmanship shown. And then because I left the pool, I went over to the gym and watched our kids play, our boys play Red Creek in the JV and varsity. And there again, there were quite a few people there. I was pleased and I got to meet our supervisors and they were doing a great job. And the coaches were doing a good job. It was a good, good games.
Great.
And also on Facebook today, I think the high school, I, I can't remember, but I think they posted their Spirit Week thing. So that was welcome news to see that publicized to the community. Thank you.
Paul, your hand is up, but I believe your computer is frozen. So are you there? I have a feeling we've lost Paul. If he comes back in the next few minutes, we'll let him jump in.
I think his hand was raised, Cindy, to as part of the vote.
Oh, oh, do you?
Yes.
It was slowing down that much.
Yeah, I think so. Andy likes to wave.
We'll wave back to him. All right. Are there any board member requests or comments or discussion items tonight that any of you would like to bring up? Obviously, Paul can't because he's frozen, but anyone else? Jason?
I just want to thank everybody. I just want to thank everybody for being so supportive of me with everything that I've been going through lately. It means a lot. So I, I just thought I'd take a couple of seconds and thank everyone for reaching out to me and everything you've done. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're with you, Jason. Yeah, absolutely. All right. At this time, we need to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a specific employee. Is there a motion, please? Isetta and John? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Then Tina, I will let you take care of getting the people out and we'll take a minute break or so. Yes, Jason?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to let you know Paul texted me and said that he can hear.
Oh, good. All right.
Okay.
Hang in there, Paul. All right. Tell him to hang in. All right. If any, we'll take a couple of minutes break. Linda?
Just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone who is going off.
There will not be any, any business when you come back, correct?
There will be no business conducted when we return. When we return to public session, it will simply be to adjourn.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask all the public to leave the meeting. Mike, I'm going to stop the recording.